October 18th, 2022. And Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
I will. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee. Robert Yunt.
Here.
I am expecting Mokey Two. Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Ron Bernier, are you on the phone?
Here.
You do have a call, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anything any members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll give you a minute, ma'am.
Um, can I go ahead now?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um. AM 22125. Just wanted to talk about it. AM 22129. And I think that'll do it.
Okay. Is there any other members that have something they want to pull from the agenda? Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, then the agenda is proved as presented. If you'll all stand, please. And Madam Clerk, would you lead us to the question?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Assemblyperson Two has arrived at 6:02 maybe. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of the preceding meetings. Are there any corrections to the minutes that were presented? Okay, hearing none, the minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is reports and correspondence. We have a report from the City of Wasilla, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Borough Manager, and Assembly. I'm Glenda Ledford, Mayor for the City of Wasilla. And how many of you like to do the cornhole? Uh, we have the very place for you to be on Saturday, October the 22nd. The Matsu YMCA Cornhole Tournament fundraiser will be at Wasilla High School from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Registration is 9:00 to 9:45. They're gonna have a wall of guns and lots of prizes, so bring the kids and come on out. And also, the transportation fair is October the 20th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Menard Sports Center. If you've got potholes, come and tell them about it. And also, uh, get ready for the DEA National Drug Takeback. And it's Saturday, October the 29th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Palmer and Wasilla Fred Meyers and Willow Community Center. So if you turn your drugs in, the unused medication, we'll take it all. Anyway. You can reduce prescription drug abuse, accidental poisoning, and protect our water and environment. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we need to bring them in a brown paper bag or something? Yes. Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
I must have been living on the moon. I have absolutely no idea what a cornhole, whatever that is thing is. What is that?
Okay. Uh, somebody help me out here. It is a game. You have, um, have you ever been to Talcantina to Mile High Pizza?
Just a minute, we have a professional here.
An adult beanbag toss.
Adult, we get to, oh, never mind. I was gonna say.
That's all I got.
Okay. Got it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. Are there any other city reports? I don't see anybody else. Do we have a report from the school district? Hey, I don't see anybody. We have a report from the state, sir?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly staff. Todd Smalden with the Governor's Office. And I don't have, uh, too much to report other than I'm here to just listen to the discussion about your priorities and so that I can, uh, learn and, and hear the different perspectives of, of the members of the Assembly. And I know that, uh, public safety and, and infrastructure are big priorities for the governor. Uh, KGB Road is started, so I don't know if you can officially check that one off your list, but at least it's, uh, at least it's starting. Yeah, Manager Brown is saying no, not till it's done. Okay. Uh, but, uh, there, there's also a number of other DOT projects that, that you know are, are gonna get going here, but I'm just here to listen. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Questions to the state? I guess not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there Joint Assembly School Board Committee on School Issues update? I don't think so, we haven't had a meeting, right? Are there any public relations reports? Okay. Mr. Brown, we're ready for your report, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be relatively brief. Um, so recently, obviously, and I know a number of Assembly members have gotten numerous calls about spot flooding events, surface water, groundwater issues across the borough. Obviously, it's been a very high precipitation, uh, summer. The past three months have been anywhere between maybe 160 and 220% more precipitation than usual. So in many cases, double what we would normally get in a three-month period. Um, so it's not lost on us that there are a number of residents who are experiencing uh, inundated, uh, water and septic systems. Um, and in some cases flooding into homes and crawl spaces, uh, outbuildings, et cetera. So one of the things, uh, I wanted to mention to the Assembly tonight, staff are gonna be working on over the winter, uh, is to look at the prospect of a water and septic LID. So basically, something where we don't necessarily have, uh, the powers to go in and, and fix those things on private property, but we could help to finance and set folks up that are, have experienced maybe an existing system that needs to be replaced or upgraded. Uh, and then the borough kind of step in like we do with road, road improvement projects and gas LIDs and provide the vehicle to get folks there and allow them to put that against their, their property taxes or against the, the value they have in their, their land. So staff are gonna be working on, um, developing criteria that we can bring to the Assembly uh, for something to roll out in the spring that would allow folks to, you know, go through an application process and, and qualify for that on an individual basis. Typically, I mean, we have done, I think, gas LIDs on, on an individual basis, but it's more groups of folks. Um, this would actually allow folks to, uh, apply on an individual basis. Uh, obviously, that will likely come along with another appropriation to provide the funding in that account that would allow us to do that, that financing. So, uh, Finance is taking a look at that. And staff will kind of talk through what that process should look like, what criteria should be included, and how we would kind of vet and approve something like that. Um, so if the Assembly has any thoughts on that, you wanna touch base with me. If you have ideas, opinions, or anything you wanna offer, I would welcome that, and we'll be looking at it over the cup, next few months. Obviously, we're in a time now where we're gonna see a freeze pretty soon, so it's gonna be difficult to see, uh, I think, us turn something faster than that and at the same time allow it to really be useful to folks, uh, given the change in seasons. That's number one. Number two, uh, we, uh, obviously, tonight, we'll be discussing the state and federal legislative priorities. We'd like to get on a calendar at least, uh, to the degree that we can, a, a meeting with our state delegation. Uh, obviously, everybody's up for reelection or election, uh, here in November, but we wanna do at least see if we could calendar something in the mid-December or early January timeframe. So I just wanted to throw that out for the Assembly. If everyone's okay with that, my preference would be, would be to try to schedule something at the LIO, similar to what we've done in the past. For mid-December, get it in before the holidays, and then if for some reason we're not able to accomplish that, we can look at some, something in early January. Uh, I don't, so I don't necessarily need any direct comment right now, you're welcome to, or maybe in your comments at the end, but that's kind of the way we're gonna move forward with regard to the, uh, communicating those priorities to the state delegation prior to the next session beginning. That's all I have for the report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, questions? I see one Assemblyperson looking at the calendar.
Yeah, a quick comment. We, we already have our joint school board meeting on the second Tuesday in December. And of course, we have regular Assembly on the first, so would that be a, a meeting better for a Wednesday, possibly? Uh, so through the mayor, to Mr. Yunt, typically what we've done is we do it in the morning, like, or in the, you know, somewhere between like eight and noon or something like that. Uh, we've also done it like on a Friday at times. So the date I was looking at was the 15th, which is a Thursday, uh, as a primary. Uh, and if that doesn't work, we can always look, we were looking at also January 6th. Those were the two primary dates, but there's, there's more latitude. We don't often, we haven't done those meetings in the evenings. Uh, we tipped in to do them, uh, during the day. Thank you.
And we, as far as we know, the, um, Governor's budget will be released on the 15th. So that may be a good coincidence there, so. Any other questions or comments to the city man, or the Borough Manager? Okay. Mr. Attorney, you have a report, sir?
Um, I do not. We have an executive session at the end of tonight's meeting, so I'll save my comments for that.
Okay. Madam Clerk, report.
Just want to remind the Assembly that absentee early voting begins Monday. It runs until the day before election, and of course, that election date is November 8th. If you have any questions or if you hear anything, please give me a call.
Any questions from the Assembly? Okay. Are there any comments on the citizens and other correspondents? Okay, hearing none, they are presented. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the IM whenever you are.
I am 22225 informing the Assembly of the manager's signature on the post-declaration sub-grantee recovery plan for the September 2022 flooding disaster. I am 22227 reporting the conclusion of contract for bid 20056P with the ECI Alaska for final contract amount of $548,438.66. For the Willow Library replacement design and community center upgrades, I am 22229 informing the Assembly of four, of 14 fiscal year 2023 winter trail care and grooming grant agreements that will be provided to the manager for signature.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
I am 22-225.
Uh-huh, go ahead.
Uh, no, wait a, wait a minute. Yep. It, it's the one on the Willow Library replacement, is that 22227?
Yeah, 227 is the, mm-hmm. Is that the one? Okay.
And we're looking at 548, over half a million bucks. How much of that is, has gone to the log cabin upgrade? Of that, is that, is that the total amount that we've put into this thing so far?
Your staff is coming.
Through the mayor to Assemblymember McKee, Cheyenne Heidel, Finance Director. That is solely for the Willow Library design. The log cabin, we spent approximately $390,000 for, and that is under its own project.
So how come it's included in this thing? It says for the Willow Library replacement design and community center upgrades.
That's the Waco building, the Willow Library and Community Center is one building. The log cabin is a separate building.
When did we build this, uh, Willow Library? Cause I, I remember when I went there and it was this little teeny tiny house kind of a thing. How long ago was the Willow Library built? And cause, cause, cause it kind of surprises me that we're going for half, over half a million if we just built it, some, not that long ago.
Truthfully, I didn't know when the Willow Library was originally built. Um, that building has been in existence for quite a while, I wanna say at least 30 years.
Yeah, the, the community hall, the community hall part of that was dedicated when I was mayor before. But if you're asking just about the library portion, oh, here it comes, more staff. Is that the question, the library portion?
Yeah, I think that's probably more relevant to, yeah. Kind of narrowing it down.
Thank you.
Eric Phillips, Community Development Director, through the mayor. Uh, Assemblymember McKee, I believe the, the structure was early 80-ish. So, uh, 40, 40-ish years old. Uh, but it was, the library was torn down and built from the ground up, or the community center itself was just renovated, and they're attached together.
And so when did the, the latter happen, when you're talking about the community center and it being attacked?
We just did the ribbon cutting last November.
Okay, so we're not gonna be doing anything that we just cut the ribbon for. We're gonna be doing, we're not gonna be putting any money into what was something that we just worked on within the last year. I guess, cause I, I think I'm confused about what's the community center and what's the library.
Um, Assemblymember McKee, the information memorandum is telling you we're closing out that contract because this work has been done already. So there's no additional money to go into the project.
I had three questions and you just answered all three of them. Thank you kindly.
Assemblyperson, yeah. Any further discussion on the IMs? Okay, hearing none, then they are presented. Uh, there are no persons to be heard. Uh, the next item is public hearing. And do we have a sign-in sheet? We do not. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 22097, a resolution approving the state legislative priorities for fiscal year 2024. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
We have a staff report, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm gonna do the staff report here quickly and go through both the state and federal legislative priorities at the same time. There is a, a one-page, um, quick reference sheet in your red folder for the Assembly. There's copies in the back for the public. Um, and it basically, uh, has all of the priorities on one sheet, so I can talk through it quickly and you can, and follow along. So there's basically three blocks, uh, on the sheet. The top, uh, center block, it are those legislative priorities that are on both the state and the federal list. The bottom left, uh, bottom left block is, are those priorities that are only on the state list. And the bottom right, uh, block are those priorities only on the federal list. So I'm gonna start at the top and just work my way down. Uh, the, and I'm gonna, if, if you also notice on the sheet, there are certain, um, priorities that are bolded and italicized. The bolded and italicized priorities are the ones that are new and have not been on the list previously. Those are the ones I'm gonna focus on. But as I, as I work my way down the list, please feel free to stop me if you have specific questions around a priority that's listed there. All of this information is in the, uh, IM and the resolutions that are published online. Um, this is just a quicker way to kind of move through it without flipping through 14 pages of, of, of a resolution. Uh, the first two I'm gonna take together at the top there are the Community, Community Transportation Program and Transportation Alternatives Program. Um, there's actually a reso on the agenda tonight, uh, under the consent agenda that you'll be, uh, considering, uh, that talks about these two programs. So this is, uh, federal, federal transportation money, um, that is made available to where municipalities can apply for, uh, and nominate transportation projects that they wanna see done in their, uh, communities. So if you'll recall, there's four CTP projects that the borough already has that DOT is working on that were nominated through the CTP program. Uh, that was Herman Road, Hemmer, Herman, Herman Road, Wasilla, Emma Road and Palmer, the Selden Extension, uh, going out to Pittman, uh, and the trunk, uh, finishing South Trunk Road, uh, across Wasilla Creek. Uh, the Seward Meridian Project is also a CTP-nominated project. So that, this basically lists in the resolution that, uh, advocating for CTP and TAP nominations, as well as safe streets and roads for all, will be a legislative priority. So this kind of aligns with what the Assembly's talked about in the past with regards to getting, uh, bringing federal dollars into the borough to help us make investments in infrastructure. Um, so a lot of this funding becomes available is because of the bipartisan infrastructure law. Uh, and this is one mechanism by which we feel as a staff, we have a reasonable opportunity to secure funding. Um, so that's what those first two entries are. Um, the DOT projects I'm gonna move past, none of those are new. It just reemphasizes the importance of these projects that DOT is performing in the borough. That takes me down to the Willow Fire and EMS station. So as we talk about, uh, funding for public safety, uh, the Borough Assembly already appropriated, I believe, 3.5-ish million dollars uh, to build an EMS station, uh, in Willow. A station, I believe it's 12-9. What we're thinking here is potentially trying to leverage the local appropriation and treat it as kind of a match and ask the state to meet us halfway because frankly, the fire service area won't be able to raise the revenues needed to build the station. But we thought it makes a lot more sense if we build the two together, uh, as opposed to building them separately. So the thought was here is, let's get that in our priorities, uh, and set it up as a match and, and go to the legislature and talk about how we've already put local money in, and if they, we could look for a match opportunity, that would allow us to do both fire and EMS, uh, out in Willow. Uh, for EMS, that's a, a big gap for us, uh, in between the Northern Valley communities, uh, in the core area. The remainder of those bullets that are listed in the state and federal block are, there's nothing new there. These are all ones that have, uh, appeared on previous, uh, priorities, so I'm not gonna hit them into individually unless there are any questions. I'll pause for a second, then I'll move on to the state priorities.
Uh-huh. Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
So I'm looking at, uh, the Port McKenzie rail extension for 190 million and then, uh, $30 million for the Port McKenzie public road upgrade, multimodal, whatever use thing. Um, I thought we had changed kind of our philosophies and our direction on the port, kind of like dropping off the port part and thinking about enhancing it as a, as an industrial development area, something like that. Why do, I don't understand how come we're still hanging on a, the railroad thing?
Yeah, so through the mayor, uh, to Ms. McKee, that's a great question. Uh, I've had a couple of questions about, well, why do we show the, the, I'm gonna call PMRE, the Point, Point Mac Rail Extension Project. Why do we show PMRE for 190 million and then talk about a road along the same corridor for 30 million? And, and if you'll recall, back on September 6th, when we kind of did a pretty long, uh, port update, the Assembly's had a longstanding priority for the 190 million rail extension, but the Assembly's never taken action to remove that from a list. So I represented both of them on the list tonight for your consideration. Yes, we would like to move forward with making the Port Mac Rail Extension Corridor a public road. Uh, and that's what the $30 million would do. It would allow us to go in there and replace six one-lane rail bridges with two bridges that would be appropriate for two-way vehicular traffic, uh, as well as finish off the road topping signage, um, and make sure we have the proper grades and signage with, uh, the four existing intersections where we do have roads that cross that rail corridor. Uh, but that's an, that's a decision for the Assembly, so we left both priorities on there. Certainly, one or both could be removed if that's the Assembly's, uh, desire. Um, but we, I'm not in a position to say that the borough isn't interested in completing the rail extension project.
I'll say it for you, because that's certainly my, the way I feel about it. If I, if there's something in this legislative priority package that I don't like, if I vote no, and I, so how do I, I'm not asking you to tell me how to vote, but I'm saying if there's something in that package that I don't want, I'd have to vote no, wouldn't I?
Okay, right now, we're on staff report, and so then we'll go into public hearing. After we close the public hearing, we'll come back then for any amendments or approval by the Assembly.
Thank you.
Okay, so continuing on, oh, there are other questions? All right, moving on to state priorities. Obviously, full fun, uh, well, I told you I'd just stick to the bold and italicized ones. Um, so I just talked about the Port Mac Rail Extension Public Road Upgrade. Um, one other piece of news is we did get word back from the Department of Commerce today at the state level uh, that previous grants, cause there's been about $184 million in state funding put towards building that rail corridor, they believe it is allowable for multimodal use.
I was centered, um, Assemblyperson McKee.
Oh, I'm, thank you.
Oh. So, so in other words, that $184 million investment from a state perspective, the granting agency is essentially saying you can use it for multimodal use without any rescoping or cha, or legislative action required. Um, so that's good news because that, that is one of the priorities that we did have listed in here or in that package was to go out and seek legislative action to allow that to be allowable use. The granting agency essentially is saying, we think that's allowable. Um, the second component to that, uh, that's port-related, uh, is the corporate tax holiday for Port McKenzie. We talked about that on September 6th. This basically would be seeking legislative support for creating a corporate tax holiday for the port district that would, in theory, uh, help to incentivize private investment in the port by creating a, a tax incentive, if you will, at the state level. So that would require state action. Moving on down, uh, there's an education support line. There's about four priorities in there, which includes, uh, base student allocation increase, uh, facilities for three charter schools. So that came up during our last joint meeting. Uh, and I think an Assemblymember or two asked, well, how do we plan on moving forward with advocating for, uh, moving these three charter schools out of leased facilities into the permanent borough-owned structures? Um, so this was, this would be our initial going-in strategy is to go lobby the state to see if there's any opportunity to get state grant funding to support those facilities. Also, it, um, uh, out, it advocates for transportation allocation increase. The Matsu Borough, I think, has more road miles than any other school district in the state, so that remaining flat disproportionately affects us. Um, and then support for ending the school bond debt reimbursement moratorium, which is a resolution the Assembly has previously supported. So th, those are the education-related ones. So if you recall during the joint meeting, there was, basically, there was a discussion that the Assembly would support the school district's priorities or school board's priorities legislatively and that we would lobby jointly, uh, for initiatives that are, are near and dear to the school district. So this replicates what the school board is considering, uh, as their main legislative priorities for the next session. The state land transfers to the Matsu Borough, uh, is basically, um, something new that we wanna, uh, start a conversation about, which basically, um, is a request to ask a state legislator to pick up, uh, and support transfer of additional state lands to the borough. Um, so the municipal title of lands that we've gotten in the past, we burnt through a lot of those that are close to or on a road system and really have access and value. We have MEA lands that are harder to access, that are way out there, uh, so they're, they're difficult and expensive to survey. Uh, and obviously, they have less value because they have less access. Um, so that's a challenge. The state has plenty of land, uh, in the Matsu Borough that could potentially, some of which, be transferred to the borough and then allow the borough, uh, to essentially move forward with allocating how that land might be used, selling it off, whatever that may be. It's really, this is kind of a local control conversation. It is, hey, state, give us, give us the latitude and we'll do something with it. And I think a couple of recent examples, uh, of good, uh, actions by the Assembly are the, the, uh, sale of the land to the SCTP, the youth shooting program. Uh, and then more recently, the IPP Renewable Energy Partnership, where IPP partnered with MEA, uh, for a solar farm out in the Houston area. So I think those, if folks were wondering like, well, what do you mean by that? Those are example, examples of how the borough has land and then can go out and do things for that, uh, for the community. Uh, and perhaps we could argue that we're in a better position to do that than the state.
You'll comment now or after?
Just kind of a question about this one particular one. Um, had we identified parcels that we're particularly interested in? Or would that be part of this process if this is a priority to maybe, um, identify some key parcels that we would have interest in and, and start that discussion with the state?
Yeah, so through the mayor to Ms. Nowers, answers yes and yes. Uh, yes, we need this to be a priority to really commit staff time to it. But as I understand it, our land management folks have a spreadsheet of lands that they think would be, um, better served in borough hands. That's just our opinion. Okay, I'm gonna keep moving.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Stephanie, Stephanie got me.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and that's a good question. The, the other thing is when we package this to communicate it to the state delegation, we will hand out a booklet that's a lot more visual than a 12 or 14-page narrative in a resolution. So we're gonna use maps and whatnot to illustrate our points. Um, I would expect one of those maps to be a la, uh, just an overlay of the borough and show where the larger state parcels, borough parcel lands are, and then how we might potentially accumulate more that would allow us to then go out and, and do things with it. So we'll have a little bit better way to represent that if this gets passed tonight.
Assemblyperson McKee. I think one of the best things we could do is take that map when we were talking about West Susitna and the little teeny tiny yellow part that was the borough and this enormous vast part that was the state. And most people didn't, were not even, including me, were not even aware of how little land the borough actually owns in this huge area. So whoever brought that up, good on ya. I think we need to do something about that.
All right. All right, I'm gonna continue on. Uh, modifying Alaska Statute 34.08, common interest ownership, and I've got Alex Strong. And I've got Alex Strong and Nick are both in a position to speak to this better if there are questions. But essentially, what this would do as a priority is allow us to lobby for better local control over condominiums. So that's essentially what we're looking for there. And then lastly, we talked about really these last two, the Alaska Liquified Natural Gas or LNG project. We had AGDC come in and do a presentation to the Assembly already, so we tried to scratch at that before tonight. And then moving over to the right, I'm only going to highlight one under the federal priorities only block, and that's the support for the Port Infrastructure Development Grant Application. The Assembly's already approved a resolution supporting submission of a grant to acquire better cargo handling capabilities at the port. So that'll either be a mobile harbor crane or a travel lift. And we're going to start that process towards grant writing for a spring submission here in the next month. Subject to your questions, that's my overview, unless there are specific items you want to talk about in more detail.
Assemblymember McKee, do you still have a question or is your light just on?
I think I pretty much said it, that if we're heading for, I think you referred to it before as an economic development zone or something like that. And Assemblymember, you said that that was probably some of the most important valuable real estate in the entire, maybe, state of Alaska. I agree with that. But I'm not up for doing this railroad thing. I mean, we're beating that thing to death as far as I'm concerned. But if I vote, so it's, so.
Okay, can we wait till we get to the Assembly Congress after the public hearing? Or do you have a question about his report?
Well, I guess, no, because I get final analysis. I don't know how to do this stuff.
That's okay, no problem.
I don't know when to ask my question, and so I won't ask it until you tell me I can talk again and then I will. I'll be safe.
Okay, I guess that's it then. That's the staff report. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing on Resolution 22-097. Anyone is welcome to address the Assembly for three minutes and then we'll go to those. If there are people online, do we have a sign-up sheet, Madam Clerk? We do not, okay? Anyone in the audience would like to address the Assembly regarding the state and federal priorities? I know we will have another public hearing on the federal priorities, but since the manager put them in for both, we will, we will allow you to testify on both, so. Caleb, do we have anybody online? We do not have anybody online, okay? So one last time, anyone that would like to speak to the Assembly regarding Resolution 22-097? Okay, see no one, then I'll close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt Resolution 22-097.
Okay, I'm going to say, is there any discussion, which is sort of already known since we already do have some proposed amendments? But Assemblyperson Yant, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you to the manager for the great update. It's pretty exciting to think about all the awesome stuff we've done together in the last year as a group. We've, we've done our entire, we funded our entire road project with no debt, over 60 million. We've recently funded building Matsu Central. And it looks like we're headed in the right direction on our EMS station. So for me, I think without question, my top priority is hopefully expanding on funding for charter schools and asking the state for help with that. I know our current governor is a huge fan of school choice, and so hopefully, we can take advantage of that, help them out. I've talked to Mike a lot about my priorities lately, and they're all on here, so I appreciate that. One thing that I forgot to ask, and maybe it's appropriate, maybe it's not, but if we could ask the state to give us some match money for fish culvert, you know, expansion, putting in more fish culverts, if that's something they would help us out with. We've seen a massive benefit from that. And I don't, I don't know, hopefully, that's something they would consider. So if it is, then I'll make an amendment tonight. Thank you.
I think it is a part of somebody's amendment, is that correct? Yeah.
I apologize, I didn't see their amendment.
No problem. The amendments are in your red folder if, and, sir, did you want to move your amendment that you proposed or not at this time?
I'll let others start, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so has everybody thought, yes? Okay, Deputy Mayor, did you have a?
Yeah, so I move to amend Resolution 22-097 to include the following under borough action priorities. Support collaboration between state and federal management to reduce bycatch, increase funding for fish weirs in the Matsu Borough, and increase genetic sampling to improve.
What'd you get today?
I'm sorry, what did, what did?
Assemblymember Bernier, if I could get you to mute your phone, please.
Or if you're asking a question, please re. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Deputy Mayor's.
Fully match federal funds from license fees to maximize federal dollars for fish and game, hold board, state Board of Fish Cook Inlet Cycle meetings at a neutral site such as Anchorage rather than the Matsu Borough or Kenai Peninsula Borough, and maintain the conservation corridor for salmon.
Okay, so the discussion at this time would be on the amendment that Deputy Mayor has proposed. Is there discussion on his amendment? Did you want to speak to it, Deputy Mayor, anything other than just move it?
I mean, I don't think any of that is particularly contentious for people in the Matsu Borough, so.
Okay, discussion on his amendment. Everybody had a chance to review it and hear it. Is there any objection to it? See no objection, then it's passed. And Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
So this is an amendment complimentary to what we just passed. This would kind of put a dollar-figure request in terms of some of these fisheries issues at the state level. So I move to amend, sorry, I'm supposed to move it and then talk about it. I am move to amend Resolution 22-097 and I am 22-213 by adding the following to the borough funding priorities, fishery protection, 2.5 million, and a strategic research monitoring and valuation plan for the Upper Cook Inlet completed in 2015 identified several informational gaps in local fisheries management. Many of identified gaps resulted in funded projects. This work illustrated the need for additional funding of genetic stock analysis, economic impact studies of port fishing, fishery management, weirs, and control of aquatic invasive species. A segment of these monies will also help continue the MSB Fish Passage Culvert Replacement Program that over the last 20 years has opened up significant habitat to Anadromous, Anadromous fish.
Okay, did you want to say anything addition or?
Just briefly, fisheries are a really important industry here in the valley and is a big reason a lot of us live here. So finding ways, this is a small way to help manage those fisheries and grow them and help the fish get back to where they need to be.
Okay, discussion on Assemblyperson Nowers's amendment. Any objection? Seeing and hearing none, then that amendment passes. Let's see, I still have an amendment by Assemblyperson Yant and one by the Deputy Mayor. Either one of you want to move that or if there's someone else that wants to propose an amendment?
I'll move mine.
All right, go ahead, sir. Assemblyperson Yant.
I move to amend Resolution 22-097 by inserting the following project under borough funding priorities, substandard road and bridge improvements, $25 million. The Matsu Borough is the fastest-growing borough in the state of Alaska. Many roads built decades ago were not built to appropriate standards, lack sufficient right-of-way and sight distance, and are not designed or constructed for the amount of traffic on the roads. Improvements to these existing roads will improve the functionality and safety for the traveling public. The roads are part of the community transportation plan and the Matsu Borough's long-range transportation plan. Numerous bridges on the borough's road system have also outlived their design life and require costly repairs or complete replacement. Work needed to bring the bridges into compliance with federal standards range from riprap replacement to protect against the rivers and creeks that they cross to full replacement of bridges that are settling or have reduced structural capacity. Several bridges have reduced weight limits because of substandard design and/or gradual deterioration, which limits the type of vehicle that can use the bridges, hindering the development of private properties that rely on the bridges for access. This funding will make improvements to the existing road system, particularly in rural communities with limited tax base, and extend the life of multiple bridges.
Okay, do you want to add anything to your amendment as far as discussion goes?
No, I think that spells it out. In the direction we're headed in as a community and something we need a lot of help with, so I hope everyone will support me on this.
Okay, discussion on the amendment from Assemblyperson Yant. Yes.
I would definitely support that and thank you, Rob, for bringing that forward.
Further discussion on the amendment. Any objection to the amendment passing? Seeing and hearing no objections, then the amendment passes. Okay, I do have, I have one more written, one. Deputy Mayor, are you interested in that? You're not, okay, no problem. Anyone have any other amendments they would like to make on Resolution 22-097? Yes, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would move this amendment that Mr. Sumner had prepared previously. So I move to amend Resolution 22-097 to include the following under borough action priorities, streamline permitting for small modular nuclear reactors for rural off-grid communities and critical infrastructure. I speak to it briefly. There are a lot of really cool developments in small modular nuclear reactor technology these days. For instance, J-Bear is looking at putting one in out there at the military base. Copper Valley Electric is looking at putting one in to serve both Bowdies and the greater Copper River Valley. And I think they're, I think they're fantastic. It's clean energy, very little, very little in the way of what we think of as like nuclear waste. And it's really kind of the wave of the future, so.
Further discussion on Assemblyperson Hale, yes, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Well, so I have no objection to what would have been my own amendment, but I was going to bring it forward as a separate resolution, a little bit more fleshed out. But I certainly would have no objection if you want to add it to the state priorities, although potentially it could be more in line with federal priorities, but yeah.
Okay, yes, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Thanks, I just, I got really excited when I saw this amendment, so.
Further discussion on Assemblyperson, yes.
Madam Mayor, thank you. So the Nuclear Regulatory Commission is in the process. I can't say I know all the details, but they are coming up with a permitting process for these advanced microreactors. They can permit them now under the existing regs, but they're in the process of that. So I think, what I think about when we are putting priorities forward is to be specific. So our manager can be specific and we can be specific of what we ask for. So while I do support this in general, I think it would be better to come back with specific what we are supporting and a statement for that. The other thing I would note is just, we're talking about rural off-grid communities. Most rural communities have grids, they're islanded grids, but you still need a grid to transmit the power. The only thing you might be talking about off-grid that I can think of offhand is of mine, which could be another use for a modular reactor. So I guess I would just, I don't know if my movement is to table this. It's an amendment, so I can't table an amendment if the clerk corrects me.
You can postpone to a time certain. So if you're wanting to vote on, discuss other things and keep this on the table, you'd have to, you'd have to act on it before the legislation's adopted.
Which would slow down the whole priority, approving our priorities.
So if you're not wanting to act on it or approve this tonight, you'd need to fail it if you're looking at bringing forward a resolution unless you want to postpone the priorities.
I would just ask as a friendly suggestion that we withdraw this and bring it back as a resolution to add to our priorities with specifics.
Yes, Assemblyperson Hale.
My fellow Assemblymembers make some very good points, and I would withdraw it if I could.
Is there any objection to the withdrawal? Okay, seeing none, oh.
I just, I just got really excited.
Are you, are you, you have an objection to withdrawal? Are you just being funny down there? Okay, all righty, so it has been withdrawn. And Assemblyperson Yant, do you have?
Yeah, and I'm going to lean on the managers for some advice here on the, on the exact numbers. But I've been talking to them a lot lately about our charter schools. I think we need to put a number to this, so I'd like to amend 22-097 and ask for approximately 25 million per school. It's my top priorities are charter schools, so, but I'll let the manager speak to this and then we'll go from there.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, through the mayor to Ms. Yant, the numbers are in the resolution. They're not in the quick reference sheet because I was running out of space. But if you look at the resolution and those numbers that are in there for each charter school were provided by the district. So the borough did not make those numbers up. So those numbers came from the district administration. So those are included in the resolution and they're very specific.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
Just one amendment on the request for ending school bond debt reimbursement moratorium. I think we should, I'd like to offer an amendment that we also, that the reimbursement rate be at a 70/30 rate.
And that's, that's not in the resolution?
From, through the mayor to Ms. Nowers. To what I recall, no, I believe we just said in the moratorium, I think in 2025, we did not specify the ratio. So we could certainly include language that specified that our request is that it remain at 70/30 for qualified, I would probably say for qualified projects, right? Because DED has specific criteria for qualifying at the 70/30 rate, and that basically we say just honor what was in place previously, if that's correct.
So is that an amendment that you want to make then to the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Discussion on that amendment, yes, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's really important that we make sure that our legislators know that what we want is the 70/30 rate and not some other rate that might be coming forward at a later time.
Further discussion on the amendment. Any, any, yes, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Well, so what was just said was that we want the 70/30 rate and not any other rate. I mean, would you rather have no opportunity for school bond debt reimbursement, new projects, or like a 50/50 rate or 60/40 rate or, so I don't know that I would say, or 75/25. You know, I don't know that I would exclusively say it must be this one number. I mean, over the, over the period in which they did this, the state did do a number of different levels, so, you know, and depending on negotiations, it may be reinstated but at a different level, but that would allow it to be reinstated whereas it might not otherwise, so.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a good point, but you know, we're talking about what are we going to lobby for? And if we're going to, if we're going to lobby, we should lobby for the 70/30 rate.
Okay, further, Assemblyperson Yant, go ahead.
Tim beat me to it.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment for the 70/30. Any objections to it passing? Okay, seeing no objections, then it passes. Further amendments to Resolution 22-097.
Is this the time? Is this the time now?
There's high level negotiations going on down there, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I was a former labor negotiator and you always ask for, you ask for the entire sky, all the stars, you do.
Help us do it right.
But I, and I'm probably not even, I put this in as an amendment, I just want to say that if we, we've got all these other wonderful things that we really want and need and the $190 million for the port that we've decided isn't a really good idea anyway, strikes me as just fluff and extra stuff and why would you, you know, they're not going to take, I don't think state's going to take it seriously. Let's say, if you're saying you really need this and it's a priority and all these other things are too, now you got to go through and shred this thing and say what really matters. So I, I, as of, just from my experience, there are some things that you don't go in with because they're going to say, oh, forget that. So I, I don't know, maybe I'm not, this doesn't sound like an amendment because it isn't, because I know I'd get, I know I'd get shut down. I'd, it'd be seven or six to one or whatever, but when it comes up, I think that's probably the better time for me to talk about it, so. Go ahead and ask for it. Thanks.
Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say that, you know, the answer's always know if you don't ask.
Yeah, so not really an objection, but I just wanted to say, since Todd Smolden's here listening from the governor, that, that I do think that the, the BSA increase is actually an important thing to do as opposed to what has been being done, which is a bunch of one-time BSA payments to the districts. And I think it's for an important reason. I, I think that the marginal propensity to spend for the districts is much lower with one-time payments. What they do is, at least our local district and I suspect a lot of the other ones, is they wash the money through their budget and they hoard essentially that money rather than spending it on teachers or actual education, which is, I assume, the reason why we give money to the districts. So, you know, rather than an endless series of one-time BSA increases, it would probably be a good idea to just increase the BSA when inflation's at 9% or whatever it is, so, thanks.
Okay. Further discussion on the resolution, yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
In reference to what Jesse was just talking about, BSA, key where they're a student, and I got to tell you, being in the trenches, that ain't where it's happening and it's not, not going there. So as long as we are asking for money to actually go to the students, I'm all for it, but it doesn't seem to dribble down that far, so just saying.
Okay. And Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I'd say that's, that's for the same reason that the, the district could get $58 million in federal, you know, one-time money and then still be in here telling us that they're projecting that they run a deficit and will have to lay teachers off and, you know, X amount of time or whatever. They, they have, they're inclined to save one-time money rather than, you know, using it for salaries or whatnot, I suppose is what I'm saying, so.
Further discussion. And Assemblyperson McKee, when the staff report was being done, we did cut you off regarding some of the questions that you had. Do you still have some questions?
Probably not. As I said, I'll, I'll fight that battle when it's in front of, right in front of me. Right now, ask away, because Tim has a point. You don't ask, you don't get, but I think they've heard this song and dance before and I think they're just going to ignore it right out of hand. I hope they do, so no, I'm, I'm fine.
You're fine, okay, all right, and just wanted to give you that chance. Any further discussion on the resolution as amended? Any objection? Oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
So through the mayor to the assembly, so when we go to work in June with these legislative priorities regarding the Port Mac rail extension project, both the 100, if it stands as is, the $190 million asked to complete the rail will be there, the $30 million asked to upgrade to a public road will be there, right? So the public road could be an interim solution, just like we talked about September 6th, and it doesn't preclude finishing the rail. So that's going to be the way we message and have that conversation with legislators, but I think it's fairly unlikely we're going to get $190 million for the rail. It would be great if we got $30 million and could turn that into a road. So we'll probably lobby in accordance with that idea. So I just kind of wanted to make that clear so it's on the record, so there's no confusion, and that's probably something similar to that's how we'll, we'll be messaging that. So I just wanted to make sure I could put that out there, so if there was any concerns or questions, we kind of sort that out right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Further discussion. Is there any objection to the resolution passing as amended? Seeing none, then the resolution passes. And so, the next public hearing.
Resolution 22098, a resolution approving federal legislative priorities for fiscal year 2024. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
And do you have anything further? I know you did staff report for both, but nothing further? Okay, so I will go ahead and open up the public hearing then on Resolution 22-098. No sign up sheet, okay, okay. Is anyone in the audience that would like to address the assembly on this resolution? Caleb, do we have anybody online? We do not. Oh, yes.
Members of the Assembly, Manager, Mayor, I didn't intend to speak to this, but I just want to make a really great comment. The Gateway Visitor Center project has been, had been on the state and federal priorities for the last 10 years, and that was a very important tool to get it to where it is today. So when we had conversations with our legislators or congressional delegation or when we put in for the federal grant, we were able to show that it was on your, your legislative priorities. So it is a very important document and it served the Gateway Visitor Center really well. Thank you.
Could I have you state your name?
I'm sorry, Bonnie Quill.
We know who you are, but you know, who knows who's going to listen to the tape in seven years from now wondering who you are, so, thank you. Any other comments from anyone to address the assembly on this resolution? 22-098, federal priorities. Okay, and still nobody online, right Caleb? Okay, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt Resolution 22-098.
Okay. Discussion or amendments on the resolution? Uh huh, Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I move to amend the Resolution 22-098 and IM 22-214 by adding the following to the Borough Funding Priorities: Fishery Protection, $4 million. And the little background paragraph, "This project will continue efforts to protect MSB's declining salmon populations by restoring fish habitat and passage and providing critical resources for research, monitoring, and valuation projects to inform sound scientific policy recommendations for improved Upper Cook Inlet fishery management. Salmon populations are declining in the Matzoo Borough as evidenced by the state-designated stocks of concern, frequent sport fishing closures, and associated business losses. A strategic research, monitoring, and valuation plan for the Upper Cook Inlet completed in 2015 identified significant gaps in data as a barrier to understanding salmon population declines and complex economic consequences. Actions proposed include continuing successful initiatives aimed at quantifying the economic significance of Upper Cook Inlet sport fisheries, fish habitat restoration, including the replacement of fish passage barriers, and installing fish counting tools on critical drainages to provide in-season fishery data. These efforts will apply more stock-specific management strategies to ensure more consistent and abundant returns of salmon to the northern waters of the MSB." And I can briefly speak to this amendment. This is just a federal companion to the state one for the same reasons, to protect our stock fisheries and to have more information, so if we are managing them, we're doing it in ways that increase our fisheries in the Matzoo and don't decrease them. So this would be, again, just a, a request to support those efforts.
Discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection, then the amendment passes. Further amendments or further discussion on the motion? Any objections to the resolution passing as amended? Hearing none, and the resolution passes as amended.
Ordinance 22112, an ordinance approving an appropriation of 1.5 million from the West Lakes Fire Service Area Fund balance to purchase a new pumper tanker with accompanying Resolution 2290. A resolution approving the scope of working budget for a project, for, for a project to purchase a new pumper tender for the West Lakes Fire Service Area. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Okay, staff reports, sir, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Assemblymember and Staff. Ken Barkley, Director of Emergency Services. This is a pumper tender for West Lakes Fire Service Area. This, this would be replacing a 1985 Grumman truck that's in service now, and the brakes are gone on this particular apparatus. We can't, it's 1985, we can't get parts, and they actually had tried to seal the tank on it, the water tank, with Flex Seal, which didn't work. So that's how dire need for the Fire Service Area for West Lakes to replace this truck, and this is part of their replacement schedule for when we're trying to standardize our equipment, and this has also gone in front of their board and it was 100% approval.
Questions of staff? Okay. Yes, Assemblyperson Two, go ahead.
Thank you. So let's see, what is, what is a pumper tender?
So a pumper tender, we're trying to buy fire trucks now that do dual purpose. In the past, we would buy a tender. A tender is sole purpose is to carry large quantities of water. That's a tender. A pumper is usually your, one of your first-line fire trucks to fight a fire. So we're trying to do combined services. So we order a pumper that can fight a fire, initial fire, but by making it a tender, we put a larger tank on it, so it qualifies for both. In some of our remote areas, we don't have hydrants and that's a large part of the West Lakes area, so that's what a pumper tender is.
So what's the gallons?
Good question, Assemblymember Twos, and thank goodness I have the fire chief here on the gallons for that.
2,000 gallons.
2,000 gallons.
That's a pretty small truck.
Well, as we're looking at the roads, it's going on in the back roads, we, we go up to a 3,000, or actually go up to 35 gallon tenders, but those are strictly for water supply, but we also have to look at the roads that they're traveling as well.
So the, these trucks, I, I think it's a water truck. I think it has a hydraulic tank on, or hydraulic motor that powers a water pump, and then it has a big reservoir for water, and you go there and you turn it on and sprays water. Is that what this truck does?
That is one of its purposes, that's correct, through Assemblymember, through Assemblymember Twos. However, it also has all the fire suppression, air packs, ladders, everything that qualifies it as a dual-purpose truck through the ISO rating, so we get credit for it for that. It can sustain a structural fire with all the equipment it's bringing. If we're going to get just a tender, then that's what a tender would be. It would be just a water truck, kind of like construction, what they use for watering the sites and roads, but this one has all the firefighting equipment for the, excuse me, for the firefighters, for fire suppression, for structural firefighting.
Thank you.
Further questions to staff? I'm sorry. Did you call, oh, Assemblyperson McKee?
So you're talking about the West Lakes area, do you and your, I'm sure you must or you wouldn't have brought this forward, 2,000 gallons is going to be enough to, to take a shot and pretty much take care of the area that this thing serves?
Through the mayor, Assemblymember McKee, yes, that is correct. Depending on what the fire is, we always bring other equipment with us, but 2,000 gallons of water is pretty substantial to initial a fire attack. It can be used for fire suppression, vehicle fires, structure fires, it would be equivalent to help sustain that. We will have tenders coming with, with this truck. It won't be the sole one. The problem is we have to be very careful on getting large apparatus, extremely large, because we have to get down driveways with them, we have to get through the dirt roads and back roads to get to structures. So we're trying to make sure that these, these apparatuses aren't extremely heavy, especially in the winter months.
That makes sense, thanks.
Thank you.
Assemblyperson Yon, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I already know the answer to this, but I thought I'd ask for everyone else. You guys are not borrowing any money here, you're asking to use money that you've already forward funded, is that correct?
Through the members, Assemblymember Yon, that's a good question, absolutely. This is through the board and they're using it, money within the Fire Service Area, I would reserve fund.
Thank you. I want you to know, I appreciate that you guys always come here and ask to use your own money, but you also do without asking to borrow any from us, so I'm going to fully support you on this, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Further questions to staff? Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing then on Ordinance 22-112 and Resolution Anyone that would like to address the assembly? And we don't have a sign up sheet, okay. Do we have anybody, we do not have anybody. One last chance, anyone from the audience would like to address the assembly on this ordinance or resolution? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Assemblyperson Two.
I move to adopt Ordinance 22-112. Okay, there we go. I move to adopt Ordinance 22-112 and Resolution 22-0190.
Okay. Further discussion on this ordinance and resolution? Any objection to it passing the ordinance and the resolution? Okay, and the ordinance and resolution have passed. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 22120, an ordinance approving appropriation of $161,904.10 from the Enhanced 911 Fund Balance to a project to allow the City of Wasilla to obtain reimbursement from the Enhanced 911 Surcharge Funding for a Backup Power Supply for the MatCom Dispatch Center with the company Resolution 22099, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for a project to allow the City of Wasilla to obtain reimbursement from the Enhanced 911 Surcharge Funding for a Backup Power Supply for the MatCom Dispatch Center. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report, sure.
Good evening again, Mayor, Assembly. Ken Barkley, Director of Emergency Services. This request is from the City of Wasilla for their, MatCom is our main dispatch center throughout the borough right now, and they're requesting reimbursement for the backup generator. That backup generator will also supply power for our EOC, so without this, we wouldn't have backup power. So obviously, for our EOC and for our dispatch to, to dispatch emergency services is critical to operation.
Questions for staff? Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 22-0, I'm sorry, 22-120. Public hearing is now open. Anyone that would like to address the assembly on this ordinance and the resolution also? Caleb, do we have anybody online? We do not. Anyone in the audience who wants to address the assembly on this ordinance and resolution? Okay, seeing no one, close the public hearing. And Assemblyperson Yon, go ahead, sir.
I move to adopt Ordinance 22120 and Resolution 22099.
Okay. Any objection to the ordinance and resolution passing? Seeing and hearing no objection, the legislation has passed. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 22121, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $6,696,030 from the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration for the Gateway Visitor Center with accompanying Resolution 22101, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget and authorizing the manager to enter into an agreement for the Gateway Visitor Center.
Okay, all righty, staff, please, thank you.
Through the mayor to the assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director, this is before you, is an accepted appropriate for $6.696 million. It also includes a match of $1,674,000 for the construction of the Gateway Visitor Center. At this point, the design is 95% done. for the construction of the Gateway Visitor Center. At this point, the design is 95% done.
Okay, questions to staff? Yes, Assemblyperson McKee.
So when this money is accepted and appropriated and all that thing, what about the maintenance side of it? Who, actually, I guess my first question would be, who owns the building?
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember McKee, the borough will own the building. And there is an agreement under the grant that Matsui Convention and Visitor Center is part of this agreement. So they will be on the hook for it. There is also a, what's the word? An agreement with Matsui Convention and Visitor Center for the maintenance of this building and the utilization of this building that has been attached to previous legislation.
Do we have any idea of what the maintenance would be on that? I've heard that engineers say that after 10 years, you pretty much bought back the building. I don't know if that's true, but that's a lot of money.
I do not know that answer.
Well, I, I'm thinking it's probably a den deal. So there's, and I, it just, that's an awful lot of money. That just kind of chokes me up a little bit. So I would, somebody at some point could let us know what they think maintenance would be on a building like that in this area. Just so we know 110% of what we're getting into when we, when we own this building. Would we do that?
Through the Mayor, Ms. McKee. So in the legislation or attached to the legislation is a management agreement between the borough and MSCBB. So MSCBB has agreed to maintain the building to include the utility. So that is not going to be a recurring borough cost.
Really?
Because that was part of the agreement. The borough will own it. The borough will construct it. MSCBB will operate and maintain it.
Wow, that's pretty cool. Thank you.
And that, that agreement's in the legislation. So you can see where we've signed that agreement. And that's already been discussed in the terms identified.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
So on page three of the management agreement under relationship of parties, is this a typo where it says, "The borough has authority to act on the borough's behalf only to the extent authorized by this agreement"? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
He has a little bit of a frown.
What page was that on?
Page three.
So page three of the management agreement under relationship of parties.
What page of the packet? Oh.
Oh, what page of the packet? I don't know.
Okay. Page three of the management agreement, not the EDA grant.
Of the management agreement under relationship of parties.
Under section six?
So the, the last line where it says, "The borough has authority to act on the borough's behalf only to the extent authorized by this agreement."
Right.
Is that, is that what that's supposed to say?
Yes. Because there, there are duties and responsibilities laid out in this agreement. So if the MSCBB fails in their duties and responsibilities in this agreement, the borough is not going to act to fill those holes. It's going to fall on MSCBB to do them. So if they don't arrange for garbage pickup, that's not the borough's responsibility. The borough has authority to act on the borough's behalf only to the extent authorized. So it's not going to be the borough's responsibility to have the garbage removed. It's going to be MSCBB's.
Okay, thank you, sir. Further questions to staff? Okay, thanks, Cheyenne. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing then on ordinance 22-0, I'm sorry, 22-120 and resolution 22-101. Is there anyone that would like to address the Assembly on this ordinance and resolution? We do have, okay, go ahead then. Someone that's online would like to go ahead and address the Assembly?
Greetings, Assemblymembers, Manager and Mayor. My name is Wes Hoskins. I'm the Executive Director with the Matsui Trails and Parks Foundation. And tonight, I urge you to pass OR 22-121 and accept the federal EDA grant for the construction of the Gateway Visitor Center. Various phases of this project have been underway for 12 years now, and we're really excited about the construction. This replacement of the old visitor center will be an investment in our community and our small businesses. It's going to be a great way to celebrate and share our culture with visitors. At the Gateway Visitor Center, tourists and residents will be able to learn about the world-class trails we have, state parks in the valley, and a lot more. The Matsui CBB are the experts in our destination, and they'll do a great job of managing the center. And it'll be a facility the entire community can take pride in. When visitors arrive here, they may not know everything there is to do, and the visitor center will help direct them to all corners of the borough. Stewardship of outdoor recreation spaces is something we at the foundation deeply care about. Having a centralized physical presence to help people be prepared before they go, know what to expect once they get there, and learn about the indigenous peoples who have stewarded these lands for time immemorial is going to be such a great resource for those who visit here and those who live here. Thanks so much for hearing my testimony.
Will the second person like to address the Assembly that's online?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Austin. I'm the Executive Director for the Muscox Farm, Muscox Development Corporation here in Palmer. I've also had the pleasure of sitting on the Board of MSCBB for three terms, termed out and was welcomed back on a little over a year ago. This near $7 million in outside money is an incredible boon to this community. It's this, being able to accept this money to get this gateway moving forward is, is just going to be paramount. As an organization in the valley that is receiving over 20,000 visitors a year, we impact over 200,000 people a month through social media. This is the type of business that, or entity that's going to take us forward and continue to just build tourism in the valley and small businesses. It's, the outside money that's funding this, it's also when people come to visit, you know, it's really important to remember that this is money coming from other communities and, and being left in the Matsui Valley. So from an economics perspective, something like this is, is really hard to beat, you know, from a small business and just an economic perspective and the impact on a community. I strongly encourage the Assembly, the Mayor to, to accept this EDA money. I think it's going to be an incredible opportunity for the valley. It's going to be an incredible sense of pride going forward for the people of Matsui Valley. It's going to be a building that people can enjoy who live here. And it'll be a sense of pride to, to introduce to visitors and guests, friends and family who are coming. So once again, I strongly encourage the acceptance of this and to, let's get around the corner, let's get busy building this. It's an incredibly exciting time for the Matsui Valley and especially for the CBB. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly? Come forth, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Anjanet Steer, and I am a lifelong Alaskan and small business owner. And thank you, Manager Brown and Mayor Derese and Assemblymembers for listening tonight to comments regarding the Gateway Visitor Center. I am a small business owner and involved in tourism. And I just would like to say, please support the acceptance of these funds because it is important for our community here to have a replacement visitor center. And the property is there and it's beautiful. And it's a fantastic opportunity for us to showcase this beautiful location that we live in. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have one person back online. Okay. Will a person online go ahead and testify, please?
My name is Craig Saunders. I am a former member of the Board of Directors for Matsui CBB and served on the board for quite a few years. And I'm very, very familiar with the, with this Matsui Gateway Visitor Center. And the project, I spent many, many hours on it. And I just want to clarify that this is a relocation of the old visitor center, which was outdated and because of road developments, became very hard to find. This new location is, is much better. And, and it's, it's located right near the intersection of Park and Glen Highway as visitors are entering the valley. And the purpose of this center is to showcase tourism and the many, many businesses that are involved in tourism and give visitors a place to, to come and, and see what's available to do in the Matsui Valley. The, the economic, the positive economic impact that this will have on the Matsui borough is huge. And it's something that we've needed for a very long time. As was mentioned earlier, this has been in the development for over 12 years. And because of current economic situations, we've been really struggling to get the funding for it. And this is here now. And this, this visitor center will, will provide jobs, more jobs for people by promoting tourism businesses throughout the valley. And I just, I strongly urge your support for, to pass this ordinance so we can get moving and, and have this beautiful facility to showcase the Matsui Valley.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly on this ordinance and this resolution?
Bonnie Quill with the Matsui Convention and Visitors Bureau, Assemblymembers, Manager Brown, Mayor. I feel very emotional about this. And I don't have anything prepared. I think it's heartbreaking that the construction of this Gateway Visitor Center has come because of the pandemic. And it was two years ago this week that we submitted the grant. We were the co-applicant. And I also want to thank so much Pam Graham from the borough who moved this through for the borough. But the CARES Act in March of 2020 provided $1.5 billion in EDA grants. And within the CARES language for the EDA grants, it identified tourism and hospitality because they were so disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. I went to Manager Moosey at the time. I said, "This is a great opportunity. It's heartbreaking, but it's a great opportunity." And he said, "The borough didn't have really the resources for that big of a grant writing." But he gave us the green light and we used our funds to pay for the grant writing. And it took nearly four months to get this done. And by then, the 1.5, it was slowly depleted. But then we were in line when in March of 2021, the American Rescue Plan doubled the EDA grants to 3 billion. But they also dedicated, not just in language, but they dedicated, 25% of those funds were for tourism and hospitality. I don't want anyone to forget what the summer of 2020 was like. Our organization, our staff had to shift and become a resource. And we documented over 1,000 calls to our members and to our stakeholders. And they were struggling. And many, many of those businesses, the only reason why they're still here right now was this PPP and loans. And our industry is resilient. And I'm so proud of our, our tourism in the valley. But this facility now will forever to me, and I think our industry, remember what that was like. And it will make our destination stronger and better, not just for visitors, but for our residents too. It will give us pride. And, and it'll show how much we support the place that we live and why we love to live here. That's why it's a great place to visit. So thank you for your support.
Anyone else like to address the Assembly? Okay, seeing, and no, has anyone else come back online? Okay. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Assemblyperson hours?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance 22-121 and resolution 22-101. And I can speak briefly to it.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, tourism, like fisheries, is another thriving industry for us. And I think about the fact that as healthy as it is, one of the things we struggle with is getting people to stay in the valley. For a lot of times, we're just a bathroom stop for them or a quick stop. And so by accepting these funds, I think it's a way to, to boost the tourism in the valley. If you haven't been to the location, it's amazingly beautiful view spot at the gateway to the valley. So I can see people going in there and seeing how beautiful this is. And maybe their trip doesn't allow them to stop this time, but they'll put it on the, it'll get them on the roadmap for the next time. So I also just, you know, it's a federal grant. It's been a long time coming and it's nice to check one off our priorities list. Get her done.
Assemblyperson Yon, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this was one of the first things we took up after I was elected in 2020. And, and there was a lot of debate on if it was needed or if it was a good idea or not. And I can tell you, I'm just as excited tonight as I was about it then. You know, for one, it's about a six to one match, give or take, right? The, the federal government's putting in substantially more amount of money than we are. And as mentioned, they're going to be in charge of their own maintenance. So I, I would like to see the Matsui borough become a bigger player in tourism as time goes by. And I think this is a, a step in the right direction. We take a lot of things for granted here in the borough because we're born and raised here. Many of us know this place by the back of our hands. So I've went to similar facilities in other communities. I would never even think about it here because I was born here, right? But for other people coming into town, this is a, a big deal. And I'm glad that you guys will be on the hook for your own maintenance. I'm sure you're totally fine with that. And I, you, you know, like I said, this is a six to one match, give or take. I think it makes a lot of sense and I support it fully.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say this is, this is a great project. And congratulations to MSCBB for, for seeing this through and making it happen. It's been a long time coming. And, and I'm really excited to see the, see the thing get stood up and, and be able to walk around in there. You guys did such a good job on that. I would ask that maybe you could start trying to get the Alaska Railroad to let you use the 559 locomotive to run from the visitor center into the Palmer Depot. So, thanks.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor?
So I had a question about, so is the Matsui borough the sole recipient? Are we co-recipients with the Matsui CBB? And who's responsible for reporting, like the, so I guess we, every two years at least, you have to do a real property report. And then there's performance measure reporting? And are we going to be solely responsible for the reporting on this? Or is it joint responsibility? And then how can we do that when we've said that we won't act other than, in our own interest, other than as it says in the management agreement, which I don't see anything about reporting for the federal grant in the management agreement?
Because it's probably not addressed in the management agreement. So this grant is a grant to both the MSCBB and the Matsui borough. We are both responsible for all aspects of the grant. So I would suspect, although I can't say for sure, that there's going to be some agreement worked out about, between either the Finance Department and MSCBB about coordinating on submitting the grant reports, doing them together in some form or fashion. submitting the grant reports, doing them together in some form or fashion. But if they don't do it, or we don't do it, if neither one of us does it, we're both going to get in trouble.
I mean, it seems like, according to the management agreement, the, the Borough has the authority to act on the Borough's behalf only to the extent authorized by this agreement. And I don't see anything in the agreement about reporting.
But the agreement only pertains to the management of the building. Doesn't pertain to grant funding reporting.
Is, is like the real property reporting not part of the management of the building? Or?
I don't believe it's addressed in the management agreement. I don't think anything in the agreement says anything about who's going to do the reporting because this management agreement was signed, woo, quite a while ago here, I think. Hang on, let me get to the end. Management agreement was signed May 27th of 2021. So it was signed before, it was, I, I believe it was submitted as part of the grant application to show the federal government that there was a governmental entity plus a nonprofit tourist-based entity together co-applying for the grant, which is why we are co-recipients on the grant. So, there you go.
Assemblyperson Yott, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this is what I love so much about having Jesse up here. He's a pretty detail-oriented guy. I was going to ask that the manager or staff speak to how they see this playing out. What you guys think would be fair.
Did you want to hear from, anybody want to, go ahead, staff, I guess, whatever report?
Through the mayor to the Assembly. Regarding the grant reporting, Finance will report the financial end of it and we will rely on MSCBB and we'll work those details out to report the operations end of the grant requirement. We do that with some of our other grants that we work with the departments on.
Do you want, Stafford, do you want to say something, sir?
To the mayor, Eric Phillips, Community Development Director. I just wanted to reiterate what Nick was implying. We manage the, we take care of all the management agreements for the Borough and they are strictly for the management of, of that building and the grounds the building set on that are owned by the Borough. So it's strictly mainly related to who's responsible for what, you know, as far as maintenance or replacement, things like that.
Further questions? Just, yes?
I'm not sure.
Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure to whom this should be addressed. The first thing is, what have we done for the last 12 years? Last time I was at the Other Convention and Visitors Bureau, Ted Stevens was actually speaker and that was quite some time back. Have we had nothing between then and now? I mean, really that simple question, what have we done? How do we operate since then?
Bonnie Quill, Matsu CBB, through the mayor, through Assemblymember McKee. The Borough sold the property of the old visitor center in 2016. And that's where we came up with the match for moving forward. Our, our board at that time supported the sale. There were several medical people that were looking at, the property was highly valued for the medical campus. And we saw that as an opportunity to come up with the match for a future grant. So we have not operated a visitor center since 2016 and we've been leasing office space.
I see. And where exactly is it? Because Assemblymember Nowers was talking about this incredible view. Where, where is it exactly? I'd like to go stand on the hill or whatever it is.
Oh, it's at mile 36 on the Glen Highway, just as you take the Palmer exit. It, it was the site of the old Homestead RV Park. It's a bluff that looks up at Pioneer Peak and Spring Creek is down below. That's also where our, some of our schoolchildren get their salmon habitat education is in that same location.
And then finally, we did go, my husband and I went out a few years ago when the Convention Visitors Bureau was over there by the hospital. And as I think I mentioned one time before, there was no one there. And the person who was talking to people, the one person that came in, I'm sure that's improved since then, but said, basically was sending them everywhere else, sending them to Seward and Homer and Danelle. I know, thinking, dude, we need to keep the business here. So I'm hoping that's going to be kind of emphasized as we go around.
No. We planned, this, this center will have much more technology. It will be, there'll be a lot more programming to this for, not just visitors, for residents. We're thinking like Trails Tuesday, Wildlife Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
Just, it, there'll be a lot of activity and events going on there.
Great, thanks.
Further discussion, yes, Deputy Mayor?
I'd just like to say, congratulations. That's a lot of federal money to bring in and I hope the structure is put to good use.
Is there any objections to the motion passing? Seeing and hearing none, then the motion passes. Okay, the next item is audience participation and we do have a sign up sheet. So let me call those first and then even if you didn't sign up on the sign up sheet, you will be given an opportunity to address the Assembly. So the first person on here is Cindy Martin.
My name is Cindy Martin and we're going to tag team you just a little bit. I would like Ms. Carey to explain a little bit about how the Y came out to the Matsui Valley and what we've done since we started this practice.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Pittman and I was honored to be the first president of the Matsu YMCA from 2004 until 2021. We started out with three volunteers. And those three volunteers saw that we, we desperately needed affordable programs for our families in the Borough. So for 14 years, we provided grassroots throughout the valley. Those grassroots included spreading the word. We hosted tables at community events. I had lunch with some, a lot of people that I see in this room. Volunteering for hours inside the schools, a plethora of community events and hours with other nonprofits. We also spent a lot of time surveying community members and leaders to find out exactly what kind of programs are lacking in the valley. And when I say programs lacking, I mean affordable, quality programming. We have programs, but most of the programs that we have, the typical family can't afford them when they have more than one child. So our goal is to implement programs in the valley. And that's what the grassroots did, was look and see where those gaps were in the valley. So here we are now and we are a group here representing the Matsu YMCA, which is overseen by YMCA of Alaska. Our Matsu Board consists now of 10 volunteers. With financial and advisory support from our branch in Anchorage, as well as through local fundraising, we have had several programs running in the Matsui area now since 2018. Our long-term goal is to build a comprehensive branch facility here in the valley to provide much-needed local programs that are affordable for families. And now Cindy Martin can give you where we are currently.
Thank you for putting up with us. Currently, we're running before and after-school programs at Tanina Elementary. We've been able to provide summer camps over the last couple of years, both in Palmer and Wasilla. We have also provided affordable swimming lessons. Most importantly, we have provided scholarships for families that could otherwise not afford the programs. This summer, our campers were able to utilize Peggy Lake several times as a day-use facility and we are looking forward to overnight trips scheduled for next year. We had over 30 kids enrolled in the Wasilla Summer Camp Program this year and for some of them, it was the first time they had spent extended time in the outdoors. Peggy Lake affords the kids an opportunity to explore outdoor group activities such as hiking, swimming, boating, fishing, as well as archery in a safe environment. It is a definite asset for our summer camp program. We believe that Peggy Lake will benefit the youth here in the valley and provide the kids a safe, affordable, and exciting opportunity to experience the great Alaskan outdoors. The YMCA of Alaska will work together with other nonprofits in the valley for this to be a common use area. We respectfully urge this Assembly to pass ordinance 22-JAS-036 to the Y of Alaska at an affordable rate. Together, we can continue to provide much-needed services here in the valley for our families. And I'd ask at this time if you have any questions for us.
It's not a time to go back and forth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next person that's signed up is James Grogan.
So, good evening. It's James Grogan and I'm from, just outside of Wasilla, 28-year veteran and a supporter of the YMCA. When I was six years old, I started doing swim lessons with the YMCA. They provided summer camps and changed my life. I served 28 years, Special Forces, United States Air Force, as well as continuing now in the valley as a teacher. And we are woefully, as you guys must know, short on programs for our children. The number one killer for our children under 18 years old is drowning. So my love, I've been teaching swimming for over 50 years. I taught it in the Air Force, I taught it to kids, I taught it with the YMCA and local businesses. We have to teach our kids water safety. We are Alaska. This is the most dangerous playground in the world by far. So number one killer, we can, we can support that through Peggy Lake. Peggy Lake has a huge opportunity to let us help our kids make this community. It's a perfect trifecta. It makes us safer, it increases the quality of life, and it gives people, kids, mostly kids, something to do in the summers and how to learn life experiences. So I really urge we can pass this and get Peggy Lake full operational. It's all volunteers, folks. We've been doing this, as Carrie said, for 2004. We're all volunteers and just here to help and get those kids going. As a teacher, I can tell you, these kids need that. We administrated and got before and after-school programs going in the valley. You talk to Alaska state officials, we are way under for having after-school and before-school for our parents who need that so they can go to Anchorage and work and all over the place and work. Our after-school program, our swimming program's been in the black ever since we started. We turn people away. We just can't teach them fast enough. So if you guys would approve this, I'd much agree. Appreciate that. Help our kids and strengthen our community. And it really puts an investment into our future, to put those coins to work. So, all right, God bless. Thank you.
Richard Stoffel?
I have some copies here of what I'm going to be reading.
Okay, give it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
So I'm Richard Stoffel from Palmer here. And I want to be talking about voter integrity. And of course, as you, as we know, we have a resolution that gives us a hand count after the vote counting computers and we have an ordinance that gives us a hand count without any computers and some other good things. So I'm very thankful for that. There's just one thing in this whole process that had me kind of questioning and things, about things, and it was the memorandum that a Borough attorney wrote about the Purcell Principle. And so I kind of read, I read the Purcell thing best I could and, and it just didn't seem like things really added up to that using this case to stop voter, stop, you know, the hand counting process because of timelines and different things like that, you know? And then I saw, decided, well, I'll get a lawyer that I know and see, he could look at it and see what he'd come up with. And this is what he, this is what he, he came up with. So the so-called Purcell Principle does not do what the memorandum says it does because the facts of the Purcell were completely different than the facts of this matter. First of all, the Purcell involved changing the method of identification of voters as they came to the polls. So there was a danger of people being denied the right to vote in the first place with the result confusion. There's no such danger in this case. No procedure with respect to identification is being changed in this ordinance. The only thing that's being changed is after the vote takes place. No one will be confused about whether they get to vote. Second, the only matter that addresses, that, the only matters addressed in this ordinance are matters of after the vote to prevent fraud. Hand tabulation and elimination of voting machines have absolutely nothing to do with how people are identified as being eligible to vote. Has everything to do with preventing voter fraud and vote fraud was addressed more in the Purcell than confusion. Vote fraud was more addressed than voter confusion. But again, the fact of this case are completely different. You're not changing the way people are identified prior to the vote. So holding a Purcell, let us go, a vote, oh, without change, oh, fine, but anyway.
Go ahead and finish reading, Richard.
Well, just finish this page. So then, but the reason for the Purcell was because voter identification was at stake against the pit selling interest to prevent fraud. And here's the only remaining interest of the state to prevent fraud. So the machines should be thrown out and hand counts instituted, which we did get in the ordinance, which I'm thankful for. And then there's operative, operative discussion here from the Purcell case that you can read. I guess I don't have time to read it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Assembly on any matter? Doesn't have to be on the agenda, it can be any matter that you would like to address the Assembly. And I see we have one person online, so go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Donna Coward DeFusco, D-E-F-U-S-C-O. The Burma Road Underpass was the great swindle of 2021. Former Mayor Halter used the project to fleece the Borough taxpayers out of $760,000. Former Mayor Halter brought in kids and parents to plead for the unnecessary project with emotional hearsay but no factual evidence. The former mayor wrapped the $760,000 gift to the Kinnick Iditarod Trailblazers in the name of alleged safety and presented it to the Assembly for a reconsideration vote. Six of the seven members voted for the project, one did not. Former member George McKee was the only member that recognized the con job. Transparent corruption is still corruption. Misusing an easement on private property for special interest greed is corrupt and immoral. The very law that created RS2477 Right of Way is only one sentence in length. The words "safety" and "recreation" are not used nor implied anywhere in the law. One would think that because former Mayor Halter was an Iditarod race participant, that he would know where the historic Iditarod Trail and the Iditarod National Historic Trail are actually located. Instead of putting the underpass in either of those appropriate locations, he used a half-mile RS2477 easement on private property for the project. To a reasonable person, the Kinnick Iditarod Trailblazers, former Mayor Halter, and the State of Alaska DNR really don't seem to care about where the actual location of the historic Iditarod Trail is. Their agenda is to abuse and punish private property owners who stand up for property rights and insist that government entities and trespassers follow the laws as written. In order to build the underpass, the Borough cleared, used, removed, and destroyed private property natural resources. Just because stealing property is done openly does not mean that it is anything less than theft. Every Borough Assembly member has the ability to read the one-sentence RS2477 law. You all have the resources to analyze the facts. Each member has the power and obligation to right a wrong made by a previous Assembly. Each member has the power and obligation to right a wrong made by a previous assembly. It is time to fill in the trench the borough illegally built on my property. It is time to rebuild my property back to the slopes in height it was before the project began. It is time for the borough to begin the vegetation and timber regeneration necessary to reconstruct the property to its original form. With all the thousands of government-owned acres in the state of Alaska, it is wrong and unlawful to take private property for public recreation use. I've been courteous, respectful, and factual in my presentations to you, but I am tired of my rights being trampled upon. I keep coming before the assembly to be on the public record so citizens of the borough and state can be kept aware of how local government agencies are willing to overreach and illegally confiscate private property. Thank you.
Anyone else online? No? Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the assembly? Okay, seeing no one else, then I'm going to close audience participation. We are at the consent agenda. I believe we have two items already pulled. Is, is there other members of the assembly would like to pull anything else from the consent agenda? Okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 22-096, a resolution amending the budget for the Palmer and Wasilla Pool improvements, nine trail projects, Willow Community Park improvements, Fish Lake Park, and the ice rink and pool replacement repairs and improvements. Resolution 22-104, a resolution approving the revised budget for personal protective equipment, and the revised scope of budget for Station 79 remodel. Resolution 22-108, a resolution authorizing the manager to submit Phase 1 notice of intent to apply for a project nomination under the Alaska State Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, Community Transportation Program, and the Transportation Alternative Program. AM 22-127, approval of final completion date extension for contract 22-134B with Bruce Construction Company LLC for the Felton Street Extension Project. AM 22-128, approval of a final completion date extension for contract 22-094 with the Boote Company Incorporated for Construction Management Services of the Felton Street Extension Project. AM 22-130, approval of contract extension and additional change order authority for contract number 21-150B with Roger Hickel Contracting Incorporated for the Houston Middle School Construction Project.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objections to the items the clerk has read? Okay, seeing no objections, then those items have been approved. And now, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
AM 22-125, approval of a change order number one for contract 22-036P with HDR Construction Control Corporation Incorporated for Construction Management Services for the Port McKenzie Rail Bridge Repairs Project. It was pulled by Assembly Member McKee.
Assemblyperson McKee, if you want to move the AM and then discuss it or ask your questions, please.
You know, I'm going to cancel my first, pulling that first one because I pretty much expressed my opinion on that, so just go ahead with the AM 22.
We still need you, have you, we need you to move it because otherwise it'll die.
Okay, I move AM 22-125.
Okay.
Now, can I just withdraw that? No?
Just leave it, and then, let me see if there's discussion. Is there any objection to AM 22-125 passing? Seeing and hearing no objection, then it passes. Okay. Now, go ahead and address AM 22-129. Go ahead and move that and then discuss it, please.
I'll read it into the record first, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, I'm getting going here.
Approval additional change order authority in the amount of $454,360.30, and a time extension to December 31, 2024 for contract 22-039P with Architects Alaska for the design of Palmer Emergency Services Facility Project, pulled by Assembly Member McKee.
Okay. Assemblyperson McKee, if you'll move that, please, and then we can discuss.
Okay, I move to adopt AM 22-129.
Okay. Well, go ahead with your questions or your discussion, please.
Yeah, I mentioned one time before, I've been doing this for less than a year, but I cannot even tell you how many additional change orders that cost a bunch of money. I don't understand pocket change, $32,423, but this one is half a million bucks. How does this happen? I mean, I don't understand how when somebody makes a bid and then says, gee whiz, now I need another half a million dollars. How does that work?
Okay. Steph?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the assembly. Through the mayor to Member McKee. My name's Tom Adams. I'm the public works director. So, the history on this one is a little bit different than what we might normally come in for change orders on. When this project was advertised for professional services, the available budget was $5 million, and architectural services were negotiated based on a program that contemplated a $5 million building. After negotiation, the professional services agreement, together with project management and our, effectively our client, DES, Division of Emergency Services, got together and programmatically took a look at what they needed for a facility. Through schematic design to react to those requests, the building became a $20 million facility. Through some value engineering, the architect was able to get that down to $18 million. DES was able to secure a state legislative grant for additional funds for about $8 million. So, we have about $14 million available for this facility right now. So, as you can imagine, the architectural services for a $5 million building versus a $14 million building are pretty significant, and that's what this change order reflects is the opportunity for the architect to now provide a design for a facility that more in line with a $14 million facility versus a $5 million facility.
I guess just I'm just nonplussed at the idea that if I were, if I were bidding on something, I would think that I would know well, and I understand the 14 million and the 18 and the 20 million and all, then 5 million, I got that. But I don't understand how the, how folks continue to bid these things. They're professionals, they should know what they're doing, and at some point, somebody's got to eat some of this stuff, and I don't think it should be the taxpayers.
So, Member McKee, well, the difference in this one is that this isn't a bid, first of all. These are professional services that are negotiated for a scope of work that contemplated, again, a $5 million building. So, you know, certain size is contemplated, certain facilities are, you know, as far as HVAC and electrical and things like that are contemplated by the architect for their design services, that they negotiated a design fee in that, in that range of a $5 million building. So, if you nearly triple the size of a building, you know, you got more design services that are going to be needed. So, this isn't necessarily that they didn't know, they just were told something different and now are being asked to provide a different building design. And so, their design fees will go up comparably.
Right, thanks.
May I, through the mayor to Ms. McKee? So, when we, because I think it's an important point, when you talk about bidding versus what we call request for proposals. So, when we do A and E or architect and engineering or professional services, as Tom just mentioned, we go out to RFP, and then we negotiate a fee that's largely based on time and materials, right? So, what Tom's saying generally is we've got, we're asking for more scope here than what was originally contemplated. When you talk about a bid where we go out and it's competitively bid and those are hard, hard numbers, that's a different process. So, it, like, you may look at the consent agenda and you'll see all these AMS, but some are RFPs that include design services that have more of a time and material component, whereas you have others that are just hard bids. They're based on a specific bid that goes out competitively, and then those numbers come back. Now, we do have change orders for those as well.
We do.
Yeah, but, but you arrive at those numbers differently, like, they're different processes, if that makes sense. Does that help or just make it worse?
I don't think it helped, but I know the difference between, I know the difference between the two types of bids, it's just that I see so much of this, and I'm thinking, dude, somebody needs to get it together. I understand this is a different kind of a one, this particular one.
And to Ms. McKee as well, like, a lot of, you know, because we watch this, this stuff as we prepare these agendas. Some of it is we just have to adhere to code. Like, for example, when we have a contract completion date in place, I think we have 30 days of wiggle room. If it exceeds 30 days, I have to come back to the assembly and ask for permission to extend the contract beyond 30 days. I'm not going to get into debate whether or not that's a good or bad idea. It's just 30 days is not a lot of latitude. So, the reality is, I got to follow code. So, we're going to come back, and you see, like, you see a lot of time extensions, right? That's because we have 30 days of latitude. So, when you go into a civil project and you don't have your SWIP closed out and aren't able to close the project, you have to swing all of those projects to the spring, we have to bring every one of those individually back to the assembly because that's what code requires, right? And that's just an example of a civil project. We've been talking about Houston Middle School and delays and why we're, we're seeing those delays. Well, every time there's a delay, we've got to bring that back to the assembly, even though it's a delay we've talked about and we understand why we're doing it. I don't have the authority to extend that without bringing it forward on a consent agenda and getting the assembly's approval. So, some of these are generated just by the way code's written, and we have to come back if it falls outside of that threshold to get formal assembly approval to make those changes in contracts.
Assemblyperson hours?
I think the manager covered most of it. The only thing I would add is, I've only had three years at this, but this, you know, been great if we'd built this three years ago, it'd be cheaper, so we had cost increases. And what I see in this is we took a $5 million project, it went to 20. We're now trying to be conscientious about the cost and get it done at 14, you know, and that's reflective of some of the inflationary costs, but I think what we're trying to do is design it for 14, what we got, and get this to happen. So, I see value in what the staff has done and what the borough's done to try to do this the most cost-effective way, given the price increases. I can only hope that we take a downturn in some of the construction costs soon.
Assemblyperson Young?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm sympathetic to the architect on this. When you go into a project and they say, okay, this is the scope of work, this is approximately what we're going to build, and then all of a sudden, you find out it's like three to four times different than that. It, it's going to create a lot of work, and then I'll tell you, anytime you ask an architect to value engineer something, you're going to pay well for that, too, right? There's, there's, it's a, it's not an easy thing to do sometimes to value engineer something. So, I, I think this is probably fair. I mean, I've not read every ounce of this, but it probably seems very reasonable based on what they're doing. I will just add that in the future, that, and it grim, this started long before any of us were here, but we'll probably get a better bid and a more competitive bidding process and a better value for our dollar if we know that a building is going to be 14 or 18 million dollars upfront, or we, you know, we plan for that. So, I'm not really sure how that process changed from substantially, again, none of us were here, but in the future, if we're going to build a $20 million school or $5 million this or $10 million that, we ought to try to get a lot closer upfront, and that would mitigate things like this from happening, so.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the manager and the assembly members have covered most of what I was going to say. I just want to say that I really hope that we can get this facility built very soon, especially in light of the fact that we are no longer running ambulances out of the Butte or Sutton fire stations, and this facility is really going to improve response times throughout District 1, which is very large, as you all know. And so, let's, let's get this thing on, let's get this thing in the books and get it moving.
Further discussion, AM 22-129. Yes, Assemblyperson Two, go ahead.
So, what I would say is if we're going into a project, then we suspect that our, anticipate it's going to be a $5 million job. How does it four times that magnitude? Something went crazy. I mean, I looked at that and I just said, how did anybody, what did you do? Go buy a car for 30 grand? And you said, oh, no, going to get a Mercedes for 150? I mean, this is crazy, I think.
Through the mayor, member twos. So, again, to Mr. Young's point, this project started before my time, but I can explain best. The available funding at that time, the identified funding, you know, that's been verified for this project, was $5 million. The decision at that point was to move forward with a project and start planning a project to somewhat answer Mr. Young's inquiry. This was not a bid, this was a qualification-based award. This was put out as a professional services contract, so there was no bid component of this. It was purely to evaluate a consultant that had the capacity and the resources and the expertise to design a, basically a fire station. So, knowing whether it's $5 million or $15 million is important when you go to negotiate the contract, it's not important when you go to evaluate the contract itself and make an award to the consultant. When that, when that evaluation was done for a qualification-based award to hire this consultant, that consultant was brought out and was negotiated for the $5 million because that's what was available. There was no, nothing known at that point that there was going to be additional funding forthcoming. But through discussions with the architect, with DES, with project management, you know, the desire for a facility that accommodated not only the fire component, but also EMS and also telecom, became something that DES requested be facilitated. That's how the building became larger than what it was, and that's where the architect responded to the request, provided a facility design that accommodated those additional items, and like you said, it became a larger facility that, you know, grew to $20 million. The value engineering, rightly so, a pretty significant effort by our architect that wasn't necessarily contemplated in the original negotiated contract, but they did so. They got it down to $18 million. Mr. Barkley, Director Barkley, went out and got additional funding for a state legislative grant, which has been accepted, you know, so now we have $14 million. So, the task at hand is to take that $18 million and condense a project into a $14 million budget. Actually, it's a little bit less than 14 million because his design services are a part of that $14 million. So, yeah, we have a, we have a challenge in front of us from, as far as project management goes, and provide a facility that meets the demands of DES but also stays within the budget. But, you know, that's how projects of design nature somewhat grow when you have a user that has some needs and demands, and you've got an architect that reacts to those requests.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you for your explanation.
Yeah, and through the mayor, so I was here during the appropriation piece of this, and I, I'm trying to remember, my memory gets worse after, over time, but in the end, we talked about, because the assembly appropriated $5 million for this project out of area-wide funds. We never thought we would be at a $5 million building, but if you remember, at the same time that we were appropriating $5 million, we were trying to generate a local match or tip 21 funding. So, there was a competition for funding. So, I didn't see fit to recommend any more than $5 million because we knew we had to also deal with a voter-approved proposition around getting these roads done. So, I vaguely recall talking about, hey, we're going to go out and seek additional funding for this building, but we awarded the design to start moving forward because obviously the farther along you can get in design, the more you can refine what you're actually going to need. It's one of the challenges we have for all our projects where we have to make these project estimates before you have any design to show for it. So, I vaguely recall that when we did that $5 million appropriation, we had a discussion around seeking additional funding, and actually, props to the governor because it was really the administration that found a way to bring federal dollars into this project and help us out with the $8 million. So, I know it was something we were actively working on from the moment we got the $5 million. So, I'll make sure in the future, I'm very clear upfront as we do appropriations, if we don't think it's a complete appropriation for the actual scope of the project, that that's made very clear upfront so that there's no confusion if there are subsequent appropriations or whatever that come later. The challenge is, that's also probably going to bring change orders because you're going to make some adjustments in your scope as funding becomes available.
Further discussion or questions on AM 22-129? Okay, any objections to AM 22? You object? Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
I can get the members to go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Bernier?
Yes.
Pass with Assemblymember McKee opposed.
Okay. All righty. Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Unfinished business ordinance 22-036, an ordinance approving the less-than-fair-market value sale of borough-owned real property identified as the Peggy Lake Residential Camp to the Anchorage Community YMCA.
Okay, we do have a main motion on the floor. Further discussion on the motion? Yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I'm all about kids. I've been a teacher for 26 years. The more things you can do for kids, the better. But as Tracy McDaniel said when I was talking to her this summer, she said, when I started looking at this thing, it was like opening a can of worms because there were so many problems. First thing, in 2018, apparently there was an assessment by the borough, and it was that this property was assessed at $150,000. Then in 11/20 of '20, that was 2018, 11/20 of '20, it was appraised at $130,000. And then, this July, it was appraised at $75,000. So, this thing's been all over the block from $150,000. from 150,000, 130,000, 75,000. I don't understand how in this market, land value could have dropped from this 11-20 appraisal to a $75,000 appraisal. That doesn't make any sense. I was kind of, when I first saw this thing, I said, I'd like lakefront property at, you know, basically $1,000 an acre. And now it's available for a total of 75,000. So that dismays me that they are so all over the block and they did comps. I think they got like four to six comps, something like that. And the differences in the appraisal were monumental. So I, going in, that was my, one of my first objections. That's a huge drop in a four-year period in the appraised value. I guess one of my questions too would be, what does the borough assess this property at now? Since four years ago, it was assessed at, at 150,000. Do we know?
Through the mayor, Eric Phillips, Community Development Director. You'll have to excuse me. That isn't one of the questions I had anticipated answering, but it is in this packet.
Is it?
I believe it was $150,000, but I have to find the email.
It, it was in 2018, yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't, if that was the 2018 assessment, I don't know what the 2022 assessment is. But like I said, we do have a 2022 appraisal as well as a more recent. We have two appraisals that are recent.
And they're hugely, one is 130,000, one is 75,000.
They are different and that's not uncommon. Appraisers don't always land on the exact same number. Maybe the second appraiser looked at the fact that there's no access to this property, other than down a section line easement. It's a very wet swampy area. That's one of the reasons, if you've read Tracy's memo, it's one of the positive reasons why maybe we should get rid of this property is because there is, if we went to sell it to the public, that would be great. But they, they'd have to go through the YMCA's property to get to this property.
What, then the reason that the assessment was so important to me was since the others were so at opposite ends of the pole, I was wondering where the borough would have arrived at today on the assessment of it. I wonder if there would be any continuity between what the borough assessed it at four years ago and what it does now. Because that, that huge drop was stunning.
Yeah, I under, I can't answer that for you standing here right now.
Okay. And I think, like I said before, I'd love to own a lakefront property at 130,000. I'd really like it better if I could buy it as a, as a citizen of the borough at the $75,000 rate. And you were talking about access and that's absolutely true. Another problem with it is that the access to the public just doesn't seem to be there. I thought that maybe I would hear something different, but I didn't because I'm looking at Larry Parker YMCA answers. It says typically access to the lake is via foot from the gate to the public access point on the lake. There has always been limited access. And then down here, it's in one C, it says during camp sessions, there is no access. So how does the public exactly get to this lake that is stocked by the Department of Fish and Game every couple of years with taxpayer dollars and they can't get to it? And if you, if we, if we give these, it's basically going to be a giveaway, I think, I think, at this point, you've got the lake pretty much locked up. So the public really can't get to it. I don't think that's right. And those are the things that bothered me before.
If, if, if I, if I may, through the mayor?
Yeah.
If you're looking at the memo, you, you'll note that one of the stipulations of the sale is that there's going to be a two and a long easement allowing access around the lake as well as a trail access from the lake to the nearest section line easement. So there would be public access maintained even through, if this Assembly decided to sell this property for less than fair market value.
Yeah. And I, and I did see that. And I thought, I was interested in that, but it didn't defeat, for me anyway, all the other downsides. One thing that they didn't change in the resolution was that, that was, I'll have to look and see where it is, but something about available to the, to, whoops, sorry, the people of Anchorage. That didn't change. I think maybe, here it is. Whoops. Hold on just a second. Serves the Anchorage community. On page three of four of the original resolution, it still stands right out there. Serves the Anchorage community for people of all ages, races, incomes, blah, blah, blah. I think that needs to go. Because if this, if, if we're going to do something where it locks up a lake that is now, you know, basically serving the community of Anchorage, which is what it says, and I'm paying to get those fish in there, I'm not liking that.
Through the mayor, Assemblyperson McKee, you, you heard the presentation by the Matsu Y earlier, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, so yes, it's serving folks from Anchorage, but it's also serving the kids here in the valley as well.
That's true. But if that is so, then I think that language needs to change in this because this doesn't say that. I mean, we can say it verbally, but the resolution does not say that. And if it tells, and if that part of what it was talking-
Well, if you would like, you know, we could, you know, an amendment would certainly.
It might. For me, I, I would like to just get more stuff on this. I hate to say, I mean, you know, tabling it and investigating it. But when you've got such huge swings in value and language that's uncertain, I'm not comfortable with that. Just, that's, that's where I'm standing on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
So my, my only concern with this was that it was to the Anchorage YMCA when we have a Matsu YMCA, but subsequently found out that it appears they're essentially the same, unless I'm mistaken, like they have the same EIN number.
You know, we have, it'd be okay through the mayor if I ask Larry with the Y to come up. I'd feel more comfortable if he were answering the organizational questions than myself. Or it's up at the pleasure of the mayor and Assembly.
Is that okay, Madam Clerk? Okay, see, anybody have any objection to that? Okay, go ahead, sir. Body has no objection.
Hi, I'm Larry Parker, the CEO of the YMCA of Alaska. I'll touch on your, the appraisal question. The, the paid appraisals that we had done, that was by the requirements that the borough had laid out, and then the one that you guys had done is land only. It doesn't include the, the buildings because those are owned by the Y. Now, the tax appraisals that the, that the borough has is based on land and buildings, where the, the appraisals that were required for the below market value sale is just land.
Is it okay for me to, I thought they both were based just on the land.
Correct. But the, the tax appraisals that the borough has done, that's land and buildings.
Okay, so the 130,000-
That we have done, so there's a tax appraisal done every year that includes the land and the buildings.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I wasn't referring to that. I was referring to the appraisal for the 130 and then the appraisal for the 75.
Right. So we had, so we had the appraisal done and it was 130 and then the borough requested another appraisal and it came back at 75.
But they were both land only?
Correct.
So that's what I'm talking about. That's huge. So I, I-
Well, I, I don't know why it was that different. It's just, that's, I mean, there was, were both independent appraisals. I mean, you could get another third one done and it may come in, who knows what, but.
And see, that's where my, the rub is for me. If somebody says, I'll sell you a car for 50,000, I'll sell you a car for 20,000, same car, thinking, okay, what do I do here? There, there isn't enough information that, for me, to make me just go ahead and say, yee-haw, let's just do this. I'm, I'm just simply not comfortable with the, the many questions that still hang out there.
Well, and if there's, if you request another appraisal, I guess we'll get another appraisal. I don't know what, I don't know.
I don't think we can keep paying money for that. But I, somehow or another, somebody's got to come up with something that makes this make sense. Because economically, it just doesn't. It just doesn't.
Okay. Okay, Assemblyperson Yon, or Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Sir, could you please speak to the questions about the difference between Anchorage Y and Matsu Y?
Right. So the way that the YMCA has, they have different associations. So the YMCA of Alaska is, is the association that represents all of Alaska. So any branch that opens comes under our same EIN number. So we have, we have three different branches. We have a Lake Otis branch, a Diamond Center branch, and the Matsu Valley branch. And so they have their own board of directors. Now, in theory, if the Y grows, it could eventually apply for and receive its own charter and become its own independent association. But when they start out, they all start, start out under a, a main association. And, you know, and through that, we, we have all the, the back office support, you know, the hiring, the insurance, make sure that all the audits are done and everything like that. So all the decisions, what is being done in the valley is made locally through the board. And then, you know, but we provide staff training and everything that goes along with the office and the management of the Matsu branch. So it's, it's, the YMCA of Alaska is our, is our legal name, but we do business as YMCA of Alaska and we, and I don't know if that answered your question, but we're kind of the same people. We just operate in different areas.
Okay, Assemblyperson Two, I think you were next. Oh, no, fine. You got it. Okay, Deputy Mayor then?
Yeah, thank you. And so I guess I would talk about appraisals a little bit since Assemblymember McKee seems to take issue with that. So this is not, not something that is a very liquid item. So a lot of times, like you'll have appraisals, they'll take a sales comparison approach and it'll be like a single-family residential house that is relatively uniform. And there's many, many comparative sales that you, you can look at. For, for a large parcel, the, first of all, you'd have to assume best, or highest and best use as the appraiser to try and determine. You're not going to just look at a sales comparison because there's not really comparable sales, not, not enough sales of large parcels that you can say, this is exactly like this one or very close. And we could just take a sales comparison approach. And, and there's a lot of factors like distance to road access. So how far you'd have to construct a, you know, a road to actually use the thing and how, how far you'd have to bring utilities if your use would require utilities. And, and I, I don't think it's at all surprising that you'd have two different appraisers having, you know, such a difference of opinion on something like this. So, and, and I think it was said, if you got a third one, it would also be quite different. And I suspect it probably would be. So that, that's not that surprising. And yeah, I, I think we should probably just do this. You know, it's a good cause. They've already been using it for quite some time. Benefits the community, so.
What's the objection to continuing on a lease basis?
Pardon me?
What's the objection to continuing the way we've been doing it like forever? Why?
Well, the, the lease is up next year.
Yeah.
And I guess the option would be, you know, to do another 50-year lease or is buy the property. It was my understanding that, that they weren't, the borough wasn't really looking at re-leasing property. From, from my standpoint, when I access grant money to do improvements on the, on the property, a lot of those buildings on there are 40 years old. I could not get a grant to put a new, we're looking at doing a new dining hall, to do a new dining hall on leased land unless it's a really long lease or you own the land. So that's the, that's, you know, that's my problem to deal with. But that's where either owning land or having a really long-term lease is, is ideal because then you can access grant money and private money to do something because life expectancy of the building would be within a 50-year lease.
So did you not say that you, that it is a 50-year lease or it is or it isn't?
We, we had a original 50-year lease that was extended five years and that 55-year lease is up next October.
So you could go for another 55-year lease if you wanted to?
I don't know if that's an option. This was presented as an option to me to, is to put in an application for, to purchase the property.
And that, okay, thank you. And that other, that, that thing that, where it says that regarding access to the lake, during camp sessions, there is no access. So is the public, that would be me or anybody else, not allowed back there?
Right. So when, so the access that, that is required is through the state to the water. And so the, the state authorized limited access. So we could limit access during certain times when the camp's in use through the week. We've got, you know, 30, 40, 50 kids there. We don't want people trying to drive in and out. Or when the camp is in use through private groups. And the access has always been by foot. And so you would park at the gate and then you would walk back along the section line and then access the lake through a designated area. So I've worked with the, the state, I've been here just over 20 years. That access is changed to accommodate. And we had, when we'd have the gate open for public access, then we had problems. So I'd talk to the state, we've had people drive in, tear the road up, use the Y equipment. And so there are just a lot of challenges with unlimited access. So we've been allowed to have limited access. There's, the big question that I'm talking with the state now is we really have had no winter access because there's really no way to get back there. Now, there's a private landowner that lives back there, but he maintains his own road and there's no parking. And if someone drives down a tunnel and leaves their car to access the lake, then he's stuck. So there's, so we're trying to, okay, what, what can we do to increase access without infringing on the, the landowners that have, that actually maintain the road?
Okay, so let's say your camp is in session. You've got this new easement that you guys are talking about putting in there, but you, but you've got 30 or 40 kids in there. Can I and 15 other people go back there and, and do whatever it is that we want to do? Fish hunt, not, but you know, fish camp, so forth?
During-
While YMCA is in session?
No.
See, that limits public access.
Because I'm, I'm working on that with the state. That was okay with the state. If that changes, then I'll, I'll do it. I'm going to do what the state tells me to do and I'm required to do. And that's what we've done. That was never, that was never said that we have to allow unlimited. They said limited access is fine. We, to one point, we could actually post hours that it would be open. We have, but that was just a suggestion from the state. We haven't done that, but it's something that's being considered.
I guess where I would feel, when all this stuff is hashed out and settled down, then I would be more in favor of voting on this. But right now, when we're talking, well, maybe you can go back there and camp because summertime's pretty limited for everybody. So if you guys are back there and I can't go back there, then, then that's not public access. And I'm paying, you know, the state of Alaska to stock it with fishing game so that I, and I can't get back there to get it. And I won't, I won't hold anybody up and keep anybody's time, but I cannot vote for it in its present form. So, but I appreciate your work on it. Thank you.
Because the state also said we could quit stocking the lake and then that would take away the ax, public access requirement. But it's such a benefit when the kids go up there to, a lot of times, it's the only time they've ever fished in their life. And so it does, it does have value, even with the headache of, of some of the things that we've had to overcome over the years with, you know, public access gone bad. It's been a challenge.
Yeah, I can see that. But my, my position stands, but I won't hold up anybody, take any more, more time. I'd like to see a cleaner, more exact version of this thing before I put my seal of approval on it. So that's where I am. Thank you.
And Deputy Mayor?
Well, I was going to call a question, but maybe we could just vote.
Okay, Assemblyperson Yon?
One more little thing I'd like to add. I, to Mrs. McKee's concerns about access, I agree with her on that. I do think that there should be public access. I will add though that during camps, I, I don't think the public should be allowed. When parents drop the children off, I've coached a lot of wrestling camps. It's the same thing in every wrestling camp I've ever done, even if we're using public facilities or not. We don't let members of the public come in for safety reasons for the kids. I mean, the parents, you know, if they prove who they are, are always welcome, but for their guardians or whatever. But I, I do think it would, it could really open the door to some issues if, if it was open to everybody, even while you have 30 or 40 or 50 minors there. You know what I mean? So I, I, I think limited access during camp is a, is a very good thing for safety reasons. So I'll leave it at that.
Is there objection to the calling of the question? Okay. So is there objection to the motion? Okay, we have objection to the motion.
If I can get the members to go ahead and vote.
So you're voting on approving ordinance 22-036?
Assemblymember Bernier. Pass with Assemblymember McKea opposed.
Okay.
Ordinance 22-109, an ordinance approving appropriation of 1.650 million from the Central Matsu Fire Service Area Fund Balance to purchase two new rescue engines with accompanying resolution. 22084, a resolution approving the scope, work and budget for a project to purchase two new rescue engines for Central Matsu Fire Service Area.
There is a main motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Is there any objections to the ordinance and the resolution passing? Okay, I don't see or hear any objections. So the ordinance and resolution has passed. And there are no vetoes. Madam Clerk?
Introductions for public hearing on November 22nd. Ordinance 22083, ordinance 22104 with accompanying resolution, 22082. Ordinance 22122 with accompanying resolution, 22102. Bear with me, can't turn the page. Ordinance 22123 with accompanying resolution, 22106. Ordinance 22124, ordinance 22125. Ordinance 22126 with accompanying resolution, 22107. Ordinance 2127 with the accompanying resolution, 22105. Ordinance 22128 and accompanying resolution, 22109.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for November 22nd, 2022.
Is there discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing none, the legislation has been introduced. There's no vacancy report. There is no other new business. There's no referrals. There's no reconsiderations. So we'll go ahead and go to comments and then we will move into the executive session. So Deputy Mayor, comments?
No, I'd better not.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
Just a pretty cool night to see that visitor center move forward. It's been long sought. And I think that, that YMCA will really, I just, I think we make investments with our land in the borough and seeing one go for youth is a good thing. So I'll leave it there.
Assemblyperson Yon?
Are we going to do comments after executive session or is this it?
I think this is it.
All right. So the very selfish side of me, this will be our last meeting before the election. And the very selfish side of me hopes that the Assemblyman to my far left loses his race for State House and continue to serve with us. But, but I do want to wish him luck. I know he's given four years of complete dedication to the borough and I, I appreciate everything and, and I wish you best of luck. It, it's hard for me to set aside my selfish wishes, but I think I'll do it this time. So I'll leave it at that.
So you don't know for sure which way you would vote, huh? If you want to, Madam Clerk? Nothing? Okay, okay. Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, I think we did a couple of really great things today with the, with the visitors, new visitor center and the camp for the YMCA. So right on.
Okay. Assemblyperson Two, comments?
Yep. So I'm happy that we passed for the YMCA. I think that's fantastic. And then I think that the borough might want to think more about stormwater. Seems like a lot of the residents has been flooded out and it's year after year after year after year. That's about all we got.
Okay. Assemblyperson McKea, comments?
Hope I've been pretty chatty tonight, but I'm, well, you know, I'm passionate about this stuff. So I'll say what I think and you all know that. I'm excited about the November 8th election and the hand count thing, I think, has been taking care of so many people's objections. I think that people are going to go into this with enthusiasm and I'm just really glad we're there. So thanks very much.
Mr. Attorney, comments? Okay. Assemblyperson Ron?
I'd like to thank, yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and I'd like to thank God for blessing us all, Lord. Please forgive us for our sins. May you guide us all with your hearts, our minds. May you bless everyone in the valley here. Give us wisdom, Lord. May we follow you. May we do your will, Lord. May we keep thoughts of our friends and neighbors and loved ones. Just try to help and love one another. In Jesus's name, amen.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to enter executive session for matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be kept confidential and to discuss matters involving consideration of borough records that by law are not subject to public disclosure and discussion of matters subject to attorney-client privilege, in particular to discuss Aspen versus Pearson versus Hall and MSB. Those in executive session will be the mayor, the assembly, the manager, the attorney and the clerk.
Is there discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Is there any objection? Hearing none, then we are going into executive session at eight, what, 38? Oh, 36 you got? Eight thirty-six? Yeah, so-
Assemblymember Bernier, Bernier, you can go ahead and hang up and I will give you a call.
That's okay. That's okay, no problem. So we'll go ahead and we'll come back at seven forty, or eight forty-five, excuse me.
For the executive session?
Yeah.